Mine had nine, nine.
That may be it, right there. I mean, it's a direct positive, I guess.
Oh, I gave it to you.
A hundred and fifty.
I do have an extra one of those.
A few pillows, you know, a few pillows there.
Mr. P. here. Okay, P. here, ready. You guys ready?
Ready.
Okay. Notice was duly given that the regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons, Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at six P. M. in the courtroom at City Hall. This is a call to order. We're gonna observe a moment of silence, followed by invocation led by Councilman Robert Shaw, and a pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Marvin Moore. Shall we stand?
Lord, we've come to you tonight just thanking you for your many, many blessings that you've allowed us to have, Lord, one of which is the most important one, that we celebrate, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ's birthday, Lord, that you sent, that we could have our sins forgiven by trusting in him. Lord, just, we pray that you'd be with us as we meet tonight. Thank you for being with the city this year. As we come to a close, we pray that we continue to work with each other, Lord, as we improve our city and our parish, Lord. Again, we thank thee for this opportunity to meet, and we give you an honor and glory for everything we accomplish here tonight. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
So we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Announcements? Are there any announcements? Do we have any public comments as they relate to items on the agenda today? You're welcome to come to the microphone and give your name and address and be heard. Mr. Bradford, we're so glad to see you today, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Altamont.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a comment on several items that's on the agenda for tonight.
Yes, sir.
That would be seven, eight, and ten.
Seven, eight, and ten. Yes, sir.
Yeah, good. So, let's start with number seven, as I'm understanding this right, as a renewal of our existing sales tax?
Totally renewal, sir.
Total renewal?
No new taxes.
No new taxes. Well, great. Let me say, a mint, or anything newly been added, that, anything that the council had discussed that might not been shared with the public, that when you amend something, you change.
Yes. Well, we have Mr. Bowles here to explain that, but I'll just give you a quick little synopsis.
Okay.
We had two taxes, or three taxes that's expiring, two in one year, twenty eighteen, and one in twenty nineteen. And our, our tax elections occur on municipal election days, and in April, April the twenty-eighth, is that right, Robert?
Twenty-eighth, yeah.
Twenty-eighth of April, we have a municipal election statewide. All cities have their election. And the cost is something like thirty-plus to forty thousand dollars, because we'll, if we're the only thing on the, on the, at all these, however many polling places we got, we gotta pay the total cost. So rather than having an election in, a sales tax renewal election in twenty eighteen, and then another one in twenty nineteen, we decided to save the citizens forty thousand dollars by, because the two expires, and then one expires the next year, by combining all three and collapsing them. So nine years, ten years, and eleven years from, from next year, we want the new city council, whoever's here, will not have to, and the mayor, will not have to call two elections. So, Mr. Bowles, our attorney, bond attorney, and we met, Ms. Goldman and I, and Mr. Bowles and Councilmen were involved, and we decided to try to collapse them so that we could collapse them into one, into one election with all three, and then ten years from next year, they'll have to do it again, one election, and it'll save forty thousand this time and forty thousand next time, roughly. And the people won't have to be bothered with, you know, us coming to them to let them know it's no new taxes, this is just to sustain us. Okay? So that's that, and there's some special language, because, and I'm gonna let Mr. Bowles explain it unless you make me explain it now.
Well, I can't make you, I'm just listening to you.
No, but we wanna satisfy you. But Mr. Bowles will talk about the, the word, there's a word that they use in there, because if it was a renewal, then we'd still, we'd have to, when one terminates next year, and the other one, the other old tax would go on to twenty nineteen, okay? And that's a, a renewal, just the, so one of them is being cut short by one year and replaced, because it's got one year of life left, and it's replaced, so there's a word that the bond commission's making Mr. Bowles use, so we gotta change the language. So that's, this is just a technicality to change the language. We handled this several months ago.
Right.
Yeah, we handled it several months ago, but, but, I want the attorney to explain it. So is that satisfactory?
Yeah, yeah, if I understand you right, Mayor Carter, you're saying we're gonna combine the two, one coming in two thousand eighteen, one coming in two thousand eighteen?
Yes, sir.
We're just combining the two, that's the language they're putting together.
The three.
The three, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, and one is, one is two and a half, one is one percent, and one is, we got two?
Two, two, two and a half cents.
Uh-huh, and one, one percent.
One cent.
A total of two percent.
Total of one and a half.
One and a half.
Oh, excuse me, two.
Two.
Two, two percent, two percent.
And it's not a new tax now.
No, 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 it's not a new tax, okay. But, you know, you bring up the word new tax. I mean, but I said, you bring the word new tax, as a citizen, taxpayer, I think we need a decent sales tax we're talking about, correct?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we need to catch up with time in Bastrop. We have a lot of problems, a lot of issues, and no money. Okay, I think we could stand to put up a sales tax, or add, since we going into the tax mode, like this tax, we should maybe form a committee and do a feasibility study among our citizens, see can we get a additional half a cent or one cent, ask me why?
Why?
Our police department, we can't hire and keep decent police department, our city employees are underpaid, and we need money to do a feasibility study for economic development. We have to do this as citizens at Bastrop. We can no longer say, well, people gonna run 'cause they bring a tax. They taxing all, turn on every TV they taxing, only talk this year's tax talk. And we need to talk about additional taxes for we can operate, where we can keep police officers, we can, uh, give our employees better rate, and we'll have money, Mr. Carter, you're a good businessman, that we can have money to do feasibility study and bring money into, bring businesses into our city. We can't do anything, but we don't have anything. I think we're under budget already. And I'd like for this council tonight, not tomorrow, but tonight, maybe bring a motion among yourself to just add, that we do, set up a committee in this community, I don't know, what's your deadline, let me ask the question, what's the deadline before you have to submit this resolution?
Well.
To the Board of Commission.
Well, well, we have to do this tonight in order to have the tax on the twenty-eighth.
On April?
Yes, we have to. And, and now the proposal that you're making on new taxes, we're already, at the state max, there's a law limit of eleven cents.
Eleven cents.
And we're there, more, you know, Bastrop.
Okay, but we go, I know that's a limit, but if our legislature go before the state with a, and try to get it passed, they can do some, I know it's some, I think it's one other parish or city in Louisiana that have a little higher than eleven percent. I know we have a limit.
There is, there is, but that's generally in, in the TIF, that's, that gets into something too long for us to discuss here. Why don't you come see me, and I'll make sure that you're involved in the next meeting that we have to talk about, uh, these districts that are special districts that can go beyond that, but they're limited for economic development reasons, and it's too long for this meeting.
Yeah, I figured it's probably complicated, but that's something I just wanted to bring to.
Okay, what was the next one that you?
I think that'll help enhance our condition and make us a better and more prosperous city.
Okay, seven, you had what?
Number?
Eight.
Eight.
No, that's Mr.?
No, I just did seven, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had number eight now, Mr. Anderson, Ricky Anderson, crime. I think I just briefly, but I wanna commend Mr. Anderson, it's good to have citizens concerned about being, concerned about special murder in our community. I know he get blowed away, I know sometime I watched it on TV, attitude flat, but, you know, we all should be concerned about homicides and murders, because I seen a lady come on TV just right after that, and she was very, she was scared in Bastrop. I think, again, we don't have the money, we need to move expeditionally on some type of special meeting to get some funding for our city, and the only way we can get it through sales tax, I think. That's the only thing, you know, property tax won't do it, 'cause we don't have enough property, well, if you're the maker income, we say, we tried that once before, right, Mr. Carter? Property tax. Well, sales tax gonna be our key, I think. And I go on down to number ten, I move faster 'cause my three minutes, I wanna combine them all together.
Okay.
Okay, the renovation, I mean, the rent of this former international building, what is it used for? What, what's the city plan for? What are we planning to do with it? I said, it's split out for one dollar.
Well, that's a good question. The, um, the item, the, the new, the, the people, the gentleman who bought all of the International Paper Property in Bastrop, where you see right there, there's thirteen acres where the old mill was, right across the track here, you can walk right off our lot into, under that, that's thirteen acres. They got the hundred and forty acres, that's a mill plot, they've got other that's residential, and they are trying to put this in the highest and best use and to, to help Bastrop.
Who are they, when you say they, who are they?
Well, it's, it's a group, I don't have their name, the company name is?
We not in the lease, we don't know who they are, come on.
T O D A hyphen one L L C.
Who are they?
They're from Ravel, they're, they're from Ravel.
Ravel, West Monroe, and Bastrop, one from Bastrop. So it's a group that put together corporation, and they bought the mill site.
When you say group, where did they form the corporation?
Well, I, you'd have to, I'll give you the name, and you can look it up on the Secretary of State's website.
Okay, I think I already have, and I just find, I hope this is not a dummy corporation formed here just to do business in Bastrop.
It's not a dummy corporation, they're really?
I mean, well, you know, people jump in and do cooperation, they, they?
Mr. Bradford, we vetted them. So we vetted them, and I'll give you all the information, okay?
Okay, 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 I, I wanna keep things decent, Lord.
Yeah, they're trying to, they're trying to help us, they wanna do things that's in the best interest of Bastrop and Mohaus Parish, and they want to do an economic development piece using the mill, it's a tremendous site, uh, it's ready to roll in a lot of ways, we've got North-South Rail, East-West Rail, um?
They been to clean up over there?
Yeah, yeah, it's cleaned up already, it's, uh, so EPA, or, or DEQ, we met with DEQ on the site, the day they bought it, we were in DEQ's office discussing the site with DEQ, and, and, so we, for time's sake, we don't have time to go into all of that, but you asked specifically about this building, it's the IP, International Papers Training Center, IP spared no cost. Robert, you were with the IP when that building was built.
I'm familiar with the site, Mr. Carter.
Sir?
I'm familiar with the red building next door to, uh?
Crafton.
Craftsman, but I'm just wondering, who are these people that, with the city getting ready, you know, one dollar, when I read something about one dollar, only thing I remember, when I think of one dollar, I think of Dollar Tree.
Nothing in the world, one dollar.
Well, Mr. Bradford, let me explain it to you real quick. They are gonna donate the building at a price for eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, okay?
We got that right?
Yes, I have the appraisal, you can view it.
Well, can you read that until the minute that the city know?
Jay, go in the office and get that appraisal, please, and?
Just bring the lease back to Jay, please.
No, we have the lease, we'll, we'll be, we'll be able to?
I just want you to at least consist of the citizen, what we're getting into.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll give you all of that, Mr. Bradford.
Okay.
If you wanna copy the lease, you wanna copy the lease agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna copy of the intent, here's an intent letter, they are gonna lease it for a dollar because they can't make it short. You can make copies. Okay, yeah, we'll make, we'll make copies of this for you, Mr. Bradford, okay?
Okay.
If you can wait on it till after the meeting.
Sure, 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 I just wanna be enlightened in what's going on in the city, what can I, what can I work better to make this a better place to stay?
Yeah, we're in sunshine, and, and we have a letter here, they, they can't, they wanna give, they're gonna give the building to us, but, but their tax attorneys, as we know, uh, you gotta keep an asset for a year before you can get a tax credit. They gave it to us now, they couldn't get a dime in tax credits, so they have to wait a year, and they're saying, just give us a dollar, City of Bastrop. And here's the letter that they expect to give it to us in a year, in September.
And as this time, as we speak, we have no plan for anything to be used for it, right?
Yes, sir, we do have use for it.
Well, I mean, what, what's the plan, I said earlier, what, what we intend to use it for?
Well, your time has expired, and, and, yeah.
I wanna stay decent in order, I think that's the riff in fourteen and forty.
Why don't you come?
Stay decent in order.
Come to the office, come to the office tomorrow, Charlie, come to the office tomorrow, and I'll take you over, and we'll discuss what we're gonna do with it. Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it, we love citizen input, we don't run from it. Item number?
Five.
Five. Finance Committee report, resolution seventeen dash seventeen forty-six, bills and claims for the month of November.
We skip, we, go back to five.
Oh, I'm sorry, approve previous minutes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bradford got me off track there, Charlie. Okay. Approve previous minutes, regular meeting held on November ninth, twenty seventeen.
May I make a motion for the approval?
We have a motion by Councilman Locke, and a second by Councilman Shaw, that we approve the previous minutes. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, the meeting, the minutes are approved. Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee Chair, Robert Shaw, resolution fourteen seventeen dash seventeen forty-six, bills and claims for the month of November, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, Mayor, we have reviewed the bills and claims for the month of November of two thousand seventeen, and I make a motion that we adopt this report as printed.
It's been moved?
Seconded motion, Mayor.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, that the, that the Finance Committee report be accepted. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, the Committee report is accepted. Resolution seventeen dash seventeen forty-eight, an amendment to, and reinstatement of a resolution ordering and calling for a special election to be held in the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, to authorize and levy and collection of special taxes herein, therein, rather, make an application to the State Bond Commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mr. Bowles.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
This is the same resolution, just restated with the exception of, that you passed previously, exception of the word used, in lieu, so in lieu of having an election next year, we'll be having, combining, no new taxes, the three existing taxes that you have, one cent and two one-half cent taxes, total two percent, and as you said, it'll save the city money for doing it, it'll save, it'll be ease of administration, it also saves publication costs, things of that nature, work with Madam Clerk Goldman about this, and with yourself, and it's, and so that's, the language, the bond commission, it wants to see that particular language added to the resolution, that's all we're adding, the two words, in lieu.
So the big word, the, the in lieu instead of?
Instead of continuation, renew and continue, is in lieu of the, the other tax.
So these two dates, as I understand it, would be collapsed together?
They'll start, all three of these taxes now will run concurrently for the exact same ten-year term, these are limited to ten-year taxes, with same taxes that we've done for ten years previously.
Okay.
And, and they'll begin running, if it passes by the voters next April, it'll, they'll all begin simultaneously July one, and run for a period of ten years, no new taxes.
Okay, we like that word, no new taxes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, are there any questions for Mr. Bowles?
Uh, no, sir, just, yeah, thank you. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution seventeen dash seventeen forty-six. Seven.
It's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we approve this resolution seventeen dash seventeen forty.
I'm sorry, seventeen forty-eight.
Seventeen forty-eight, yes, sir, okay. Uh, seventeen forty-eight. Questions or any, I'm sorry, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it, the, the resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Bowles, we appreciate your coming, sir.
Thank you very much.
It's always good to see you.
We appreciate, thank you, sir, we appreciate the chance to serve the City of Bastrop. Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas, thank you. Item number eight, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson, Mr. Anderson, good evening, sir, how you doing? Great. It's always a pleasure to see you, Mr. Anderson.
Same here, Mayor, and also to the Board of Alderman.
Yes, sir.
I had requested for five minutes, but I can do it in three and twenty, and thirty seconds.
That's fine, Mr. Ricky, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Good evening, first of all, I will be brief and directly to the point, but I'd like to make some clarification, uh, I don't have an attitude with anybody, and I hope this board don't take it personally when I present myself.
I don't.
Thank you.
I need a drive.
Thank you very much. As the cola went in a time of harvest, so is a faithful messenger, to them that sent him, for he refreshes the soul of his master, this is the word of God, thanks be unto God in his holy name. It's not about me, it's not about prejudging, it's not about Keystone Cops, I speak for the dead, that can't speak, that's what I do, I speak the truth. Who killed me? I am Johnny Joseph Knight, sixty-four years old. Who killed me? I am Johnny Ray Washington, thirty-one years old. Who killed me? I am Bradley Lee, twenty-five years old. Who killed me? I am Peggy Henderson, forty-two years old. Who killed me? I am Georgia Lee Michelle Leibler, thirty-two years old. Who killed me? I am Lionel Brennan, thirty-nine years old. Who killed me? I am Joseph Musgrove, forty-eight years old. Who killed me? I am Lee Atkins, forty-five years old. Who killed me? I am De Montreal Lottie, twenty-five years old. Who killed me? I am Shay Bryant, five years old. My, 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 but, let justice run down its water, and righteous as a mighty stream. This is the word of God, thanks be unto God in his holy name. Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermans, I have a respect for this city, I respect for everybody in here. In closing, to the murderers, Lucifer, and his family, and the silent ones in Bastrop, you may have gotten away from the police, but you will never, ever get away from my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Mr.?
And happy new year.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming.
Mr. Ricky, I have a question, um, I'm trying to do a neighborhood watch in my district, and I see that you, I respect the fact that you concerned about crimes in the City of Bastrop, I'd love for you to get with me.
I'd be more than happy to, Mr. Green, like I said.
Also, you too, Mr. Charles.
I, I only have, I only have a problem, sir, an attitude is with the murderers.
Oh, I don't mind.
Or court criminals.
I don't mind.
That's, that's the only attitude I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, more than anything.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson, and, Mr. Anderson, as, as Mr. Green and I were talking about neighborhood watch programs, and, and I mentioned your name, that I felt that, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, that, uh, with, with solving crimes, the Chief, Anthony Evans over there, uh, intel, intelligence, um, we're doing everything we can to, to add policemen, we have two going to academy, uh, Chief, can you come up to the microphone, if you don't mind, please? You can stay right there, Mr. Anderson, because this is not a, we don't like to just wash things away.
Right.
We, we wanna take, take the ample amount of time. Yes. Chief, how you doing today? If we can get Chief on camera, Mr. Mr. Floyd? If you can get?
Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
Train, thank you. Okay. Chief, you're hiring new, you're trying to get new policemen, right?
Yes, sir.
We have, what, two going to an academy?
Yes, sir, we're hiring two in January and sending them to the academy.
Yes, sir. And you're going to the extra cost of sending to a Freeport Academy, is that correct?
Yes, sir, due to the fact that the Washita Parish Police Academy's not gonna start again until late July, early August.
Why is that?
Uh, they're having a corrections academy starting in January.
When you say corrections academy, what do you mean?
Jailer.
Training jailers.
Yes, sir.
So they're not training post-certified officers for patrol and that kind of thing?
Not as they usually do, starting in January, it's gonna start in July to August.
So the department and administration made the decision to go to the extra cost, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Because Freeport's costing us more, because we gotta pay for housing, and that kind of thing, is that correct, sir?
It costs more, but it's gonna give us a jumpstart, so we don't have to waste six months waiting for another academy to start.
Yes, and you're actively recruiting in, at, at programs, criminal justice programs, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you welcome applications for people from Bastrop, Louisiana, to, that wanna be law enforcement officers?
We welcome them from anywhere, that wanna be law enforcement officers.
From anywhere, good.
If they've not been police officers before, it takes a while to train them, four months in the academy, four months on the street, that's eight months before they're able to be out on their own to help any.
Okay.
But if we hire post-certified officers, that's already been through the academy with another department?
Takes four months.
It doesn't take as long. Well, if they've already been an officer, then they just have to learn our system, it'll probably be one to two months.
I have a question, too, Mayor.
Yes, you have a question?
I have two questions, Chief, how important is it for the citizen to get involved with all the crimes that's going on?
To give us information? Oh, it's very important. The police can't solve, I would say, it's a guess here, but I would say it's down to twenty percent that the police are gonna be able to solve on their own. They always need information from the public, that's what we generate most of our arrests from, is from them, the public helping us.
So neighborhood watch, community watch, that'll be useful?
Yes, because the officer that goes on to the scene, or detective, he wasn't there at the time the crime was committed.
Right.
So he's gonna have to piece everything together. The public is there at the time the crime is committed, most of the time, and they've seen one happen and give us information.
Okay.
And Chief, uh?
I would say that's not just important, that's essential.
You know that the position of this administration, we've had hours and hours of discussion about this, is that we want policemen who are community oriented?
Yes, sir.
Who will learn people and interact with the community, so that when they show up, the, the people in the community will say, hey, I got something to tell you, uh, we just saw so-and-so run through the woods. Tell me, go ahead.
A good police officer's gonna know the laws and know how to enforce them, but a great police officer's gonna know the laws, know how to enforce them, and know the people that he's working with and around. the people that he's working with and around. It's, it's very important for them to get involved in the community, to know who there's out there, know the people that can tell him information, so community action policing is very important.
And it's our position, as this administration's position, that we're going to invest more into our policeman's training, so that we don't want policemen who don't know ten people in town who can't, who can't call the name of ten people in communities. So, Mr. Anderson, we're working on that, sir, it's a, it's a process, it's not done overnight, but we want to create a culture here where people know the police and know that the police are not the enemy, that the police are there for the protection of the community. So we're doing that, sir, and we welcome your input anytime.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
And we want to thank you for coming. Thank you, Chief, that you have...
And I appreciate the captain for saying that, if we have officers that would know the community and the people.
Yes, sir.
That's what we need. We need officers who would get out to the car, walk down the street, shake hands, meet people.
Yeah, and, Mr. Anderson, you stated, and I appreciate your statements, but, you know, I'm from Bastrop, and I want to hire Bastrop people as policemen, because they already know people, okay? And naturally, we don't discriminate from anybody from anywhere else, but not only do, are we focused on recruitment, we're focused on retention. Uh, the Chief knows, as he made in a, in a report in the Finance Committee, that we lost a policeman, what, two weeks ago?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one turned into resignation, going to work for Louisiana Tech. Uh, policemen from other places, when they come here, I'm kind of suspect, because they want to get some time under their belt and want to go to departments that pay more. Well, I really want home folks that's from Washita Parish to apply, not to say that we'll discriminate from, from anybody, from any other town, but we want more people to look at the profession of police officers and look at the pay, look at the benefits that we offer here in Bastrop, because we offer better benefits than, than departments, than many departments that pay more. But millennials sometimes look at what's in my check, what am I taking home, rather than fantastic hospitalization plan and our retirement plan and all of these things. Some departments don't have retirement plans, but they pay more. So if you know anyone who wants to be a policeman or a fireman, we have some openings here at City of Bastrop, and we want you to help us recruit. We want to recruit and hopefully recruit some more local people. That's my philosophy, sir. Thank you so much, Chief.
I want to say what, what Mr. Anderson said earlier is nothing but the truth, he just spoke the truth earlier. And when he went down those names, saying the way he said it, you know, it saddened me to know that they had that many that were unsolved. And I hope that by him saying that, it will sadden the people that was around those homicides that have information that they haven't told yet, come forward and tell us.
And what, what period is that over, Mr. Anderson?
Nineteen or ninety-eight.
So nineteen ninety-eight to now, so those names were over a almost twenty-year period?
Twenty-year period.
Twenty-year period, yes.
We just had one recently saw through Grand jury indictment, was it eleven, now it's down to ten.
Yes, okay. So, yes, we've had too many homicides, uh, in Bastrop, about two a year on average, probably. So we want those, that's too, too many. And we're going to do everything we can to, to enhance our police department, but to go to a more of a culture of community policing, like Chief is saying, that's what he's training for, he's probably the best trainer that I know, and, and we're proud to have Assistant Chief Evans and Chief Campbell, of course, with us, and all the captains and the whole department. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. Uh, nine, Mr. Chris Mayberry, Richard Rigel, uh, Rigel, amendment to police requirements for nightclubs. Thank you for coming back to see us, Mr. Mayberry.
Thank you for having me. Um, as it states, uh, last time I was here, we were requesting that something, or some type of amendment.
Come closer to the microphone, so people can hear you.
How's that?
That's better.
And last time I was here, we were requesting that some type of amendment or is done, or, you know, given, so that we can operate our business.
Okay.
Also, I wanted to include that I know I didn't include before, we do have surveillance inside and out, that records twenty-four hours a day, everyone walking in our, up our stairs, in our business, throughout our building. And I think that should also help with what we're requesting.
Okay. Uh, what you have in reference to, I believe, is ordinance thirteen dash four-two-two-one, does, does everyone have that in your package? Ordinance thirteen, it's, uh, do you have copies? Mr. Pierre, uh, we've got our city attorney here, but I believe you have in ref, you're referring to the ordinance that, that is relative to the hours that an establishment may retain, remain open to permit the consumption of alcoholic beverage on premises, and the use of post-POS T certified security, that's people who can arrest people with arrest power, on the premises of such establishments, and addressing other related matters with respect thereto. So we're going to give you a copy of this and, and make sure that all the councilmen have a copy of the law that, that, that was adopted in twenty thirteen, I believe, that there were some changes in twenty thirteen, we're going to let Mr. Pierre, uh, go through those. Do you have that, Mr. Pierre?
Yeah, I just gave it to Mr. Al, no, she's going to make it.
Oh, she's going to copy, okay. So, and...
But that's no problem, I can still discuss it with or without it.
Okay, your microphone's so far away from you.
I'm sorry about that, so I can still discuss it with or without it. If you look at the current version of the law, she's going to get you a copy in a moment, uh, the current, the previous version of the law prior to two thousand and thirteen did not have a requirement that the security for, oh, the bottle clubs to be open, I mean, the security that was needed, it wasn't required to be post-certified officers, someone with arrest power. In two thousand and thirteen December, this governing body promulgated a, an ordinance, passed an ordinance whereby that particular provision was added in. And traditionally, as they tell us, you know, in law, criminal laws are specifically applied and is specifically interpreted. Oftentimes, when you don't have specifics in there, you have to go to what was the legislative intent, you serving as the legislative body. But it was specific in here with respect to what the city of Bastrop wanted to do with respect to, oh, the security after hours. City of Bastrop went from traditional security to post-certified security. And as such, oh, I could only assume from the clear reading of the language, that the intentions of this legislative body was to put someone in these establishments that had the authority to arrest in the event that an event, uh, an occurrence took place. Now, oh, we all just heard Mr. Anderson come up here, and he was pretty serious about, you know, his conviction about what's been going on in the city of Bastrop. And, oh, of course, everybody comes with their own experience and how they feel about what may or may not happen, but I can only assume that the spirit of this governing body matched the letter of this law, which was the city moved from less protection to more protection for its citizens. And as such, that law was promulgated in two thousand and thirteen. I have a copy of the ordinance, I don't have the copy of the, the signed copy that was signed by whatever legislators that were here at this time, but it was promulgated and signed and ordained and made a part of the law in December of two thousand and thirteen.
So, Mr. Pierre, the part that you are asking to change is deals with, it's a combination of police policy that's set by the chief, that's recommended by the chief, which sets the pay for a post-certified officer from the Bastrop Police Department. And Chief, I might ask you to come up and, for any technical questions, Chief Evans. Now, the, the ordinance, as I read it, does not require you to use a city of Bastrop policeman, is that correct, Mr.?
It, it does not specifically, the ordinance does not specifically mandate the use of a city of Bastrop officer, it just specifically mandates, oh, if you look at the, like, the third line, that the, oh, security shall be post-certified.
Post-certified, yeah.
Careful and commissioned as a law enforcement officer with arrest powers.
So, is there anything that you see in this law that would prohibit, because the chief of police set the, the rate as a matter of policy for Bastrop policemen, as I understand it, at thirty dollars per hour, and making it mandatory to have two, uh, two policemen, two post-certified, if you are open one second past midnight, then that time backs up, you have to have one, two on duty from ten o'clock forward until closing. If you close at midnight, you don't have to have any post-certified officers. Is that how you see it, post, uh, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So if you open, Mr. Moore, I know you, you, you have expertise in Mr. Shaw and Mr. Locke, because you were on the council at that time, and you know what the spirit of this was at the time better than anyone, and, but there's a two-edged sword here, what protects people sometimes can have an unintended consequence to keep club owners from making money. So if Mr. Rigel and Mr. Mayberry is open until one o'clock, then they've got to back up and start paying two officers from ten o'clock through the eleven o'clock hour and through the twelve o'clock hour, uh, three hours, thirty bucks apiece, or sixty bucks, that's a hundred and eighty dollars, and if you choose to stay until two o'clock...
It's ninety dollars, ten, eleven, twelve, and ten to one, isn't it three hours?
Yeah, three hours.
Sixty, ninety dollars?
Two police officers, one eighty.
Yeah, two is thirty dollars an hour, that's sixty dollars an hour, and three times six is eighteen, or one eighty. So a hundred and eighty dollars for three hours and two hundred and forty dollars for four. So if they stay open until four o'clock and have a crowd of twenty-two people, they've got to pay two hundred and forty dollars just for security. And needless to say, if you do the math, they're not making, they wouldn't make a dime, in fact, they'd lose money. So that's the other side of this coin that I believe you're here to address.
Correct.
And now, if you use sheriff's department, have you talked to any sheriff's department?
Twenty-five dollars an hour.
Twenty-five dollars an hour.
Which is actually no better.
So instead of, okay, so you pay two hundred instead of two forty, so you just lose forty dollars less, right?
Exactly, that forty dollars goes a long way, right?
Yes, okay. And what specifically are you asking this body to do? Are you asking the body to amend the law?
amend the law that will require, that will allow us to hire security for our establishment that, that does not have to have the ability to arrest, because there is no other security available in this area unless it's a police officer or sheriff's deputy.
Get closer to the microphone.
Unless it's a police officer or sheriff's deputy, so we're, we have no alternatives.
You mean, there's no post-certified unless it's a police or sheriff's, so you, your only option is to get the twenty-five dollar an hour guys?
Or the thirty dollars.
And now, I don't, I don't know whether it's the sheriff's policy to make you have two, it's the police department's policy, not in the ordinance to make you, is, is it in ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, or is it two?
Not less than two.
Not less than two? Okay, all right. So it is in the ordinance, and I misread that. So you've got to have two, two per, you know, backing up to ten.
I understand that.
Backing up to ten, okay.
So as a legislative body, another legislator of, can, can we amend this to help these guys out?
Well, let me say, we're, we're talking about protection for our folks, okay?
Next question.
And later, you, later you stay in, in the bar, naturally, there's things that can't happen, and we've got to look at the risk that the, that the policeman up against as, as also the citizens.
Robert, let me say something, you have to look at the clientele, I had a club for four years, I didn't have not one incident.
That don't mean it won't happen though, Mr. President.
It don't mean it won't happen, but you've got to somehow protect these guys, trying to own a business.
I agree with that, Wood.
All this post-certified, I mean, you've got to look at it from a small business standpoint. That's the problem with Bastrop now, people have this and that, that, you got people you got to help. Everybody not, have you ever gone to see what type of clientele hang out there?
Right, but that don't mean it won't, nothing happened though, Mr. President.
When was the last time that a murder happened within a nightclub?
The burden proof is going to be on him. I said let's help this guy as a legislative body that's changing or meaning whatever.
I, I believe we can do like security from twelve to two, it's no need to go back to ten, from ten to two, and have them paying the extra money, anything, we can go have them pay security from twelve to two o'clock.
But the amount of money that's being asked is still unreasonable.
From open to twelve, he don't have, he don't need to pay security, from how, the law, right, Mr. Pierre?
Right, well, the way it's, the way it's written right now, there's a, he has to back up sometime. Well, I, and let's, let's just be clear, let's just be clear, so I mean, I, I want to make sure, and I'm clear on the record, and I want you all to be careful about what you all say on the record, okay? When you balance, you have, you have two competing interests here, you're balancing the protection of the citizen.
Right.
And the protection or creation of business revenue. I understand that we always want to help the businessman, and, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, but just understand what you're balancing here, because as soon as something happens, and it is this legislative body who went back on its word of protection of citizens, because I promise you, that was the spirit of going to post-certified security in two thousand and thirteen, when you all of a sudden, you know, for lack of a better word, crawfish on your policy, because a business owner said, I can't make as much money, then realize that when, you know, when that media shows up in here, they're going to be looking at you and say, why did you not opt to protect that citizen? Because as we all well know, as Mr. Shaw just said a moment ago, and the reason why it was backed up in time is because when that officer's there, when that presence is there early, it kind of curtails the behavior of the patron. But when that officer shows up at twelve, and that patron has been drinking since ten, and that was said, stated here by Chief Campbell in a few meetings, a few months ago in this meeting, you know, and if, and if he shows up at twelve, and they've been drinking since ten, there's not much you can do about that. But at the end of the day, when that behavior gets to a point where it's, you know, ungovernable, so to speak, and you don't have someone there who can arrest you, then all of a sudden, the behavior of the, of the perpetrator may not be as respectful, so to speak, and it could get out of hand. So be careful what you do when you decide that you want to change the written law, which is designed to protect the citizens from this type of behavior. And I just say govern yourself accordingly, be careful of what you say on the record.
And may I say one thing, Counsel?
Yes, sir.
Um, the legislative body, these gentlemen who put forth the motions and vote on them, also have to realize, and I'm sure they do, that it's not just this club in question, there could be someone watching this broadcast and say, oh, they're relaxed in Bastrop, we can go and operate a club that's not the kind of club that, that Mr. May, Mayberry has, where he's got an adult crowd, Mr. Prater took me down there, kept me down there for three hours. And there was nothing going on but electric sliding and shooting pool, and, and a very mature audience, and, you know, no problem, but the next club, this ordinance would apply to them, is that correct?
Absolutely, I mean, once, once you change the law, once you change the law and remove the, the post-certified security requirement that is mandated in the ordinance, then any and all proprietors who operate the quote-unquote bottle club will have the author, will have the authority, you know, to open up their club without that stated security as set forth here. So it may not be this gentleman's club, and I mean, and I haven't been there, but he may have the type of crowd that's not going to cause a problem, but it doesn't change the other establishments that there may be that situation. So when this ordinance was promulgated, gentlemen, if you can recall in two thousand and thirteen, if you were here or not, it wasn't just for that club that you may not have any issue with, but it was to protect all of the citizens of Bastrop from the establishment that was selling alcohol.
You do understand the complexity of what you're asking, Mr. Mayberry?
Yeah, but also I want it to be realized, bottom line, at that time, when that law was passed, it was passed for one reason only, because of the previous mayor, or whatever you want to call him, had a problem with one establishment. We all know that. We try to keep all this legal jargon, all this legal, all these technical situations going, but let's be honest.
Mr. Mayberry, what would prevent those same operators that this council and the mayor was having trouble with four years ago, five years ago?
Ten years ago.
Well, well, two thousand and thirteen, this was promulgated. What would, what if those same operators would come back and rent another club, another building?
Same thing that you guys do to people, to clubs that do not follow the rules, do not follow the law.
Well, I think, you know, I think I was following this when they promulgated this. The clubs, I believe, when, when they would have something break out, the, the person would call the police, the Bastrop police, we got a fight or someone fired shots, right? Then the Bastrop police has got to come to a situation that's already out of hand, which puts our officers in an additional danger, and then it puts such a strain on, on our police force and leaves the rest of the city sort of unprotected during the time that it takes them to get things under control. Is that correct, Chief?
But isn't that the same thing that's going on right now with any type of shooting, big fight, anything that goes on in the city? If a fight breaks out in front of the high school, the whole, the police department, the whole police department of the three officers on duty are there.
The element is the, the, the infusion of alcohol, that's the key, I think, to this thing. Those schools are not serving alcohol, which puts people in a different... Uh, those schools are not serving alcohol, which puts people in a different state. And, and, uh, people are more prone, after drinking or getting drunk, to cause, uh, to fight. And we're not talking about just general disbehavior of high school students. We're talking about people drinking.
Or people in general.
Well, people drinking. You know, it's about people drinking.
Well, why don't they add a security at every gas station in town that sells alcohol? They do the same things there.
Well, it's, it's, they're not sitting around a table drinking five-oh.
No, they're sitting on the curb and sitting on cars.
Well, if we see them, we give them open, open container tickets, we just did. But, but, uh, I'm gonna let the city councilman, if someone wants to make a motion to do something, uh, then they're welcome to do it. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion to, to, uh, to?
Go in motion.
Go against the advice of council?
I just want to simply say, tell these people when they come in trying to open up their establishment, y'all tell these people this upfront, and they won't waste all their money.
Yep.
You tell them this. Do y'all tell them this? You got to understand what these people, the money these people have put out.
Uh, and I, 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 I'm sensitive that Mr. Prater, uh, what we do is we've enacted some different, uh, when Roma's came in, we were very sensitive to making sure people knew that they were one foot short of three hundred feet. And we want to make sure that people understand when they do occupation license now. We, we've had many discussions about the kind of information that we, when a person comes for an occupation license, before they make these tremendous investments to, to, uh, count the cost. You know, the word says, the Bible says, "No one builds a building unless he first sits down and counts the cost." And Mr. Mayberry has told me that they were aware of the law before you did this, is that correct?
We were, we were aware of that law, and also the law that any business outside of the city limits are not to sell alcohol on a Sunday. So at twelve oh one, Sunday morning, can a business continue serving alcohol?
Well, uh, we, we're not here to talk about the parish's laws.
But my state, my reasoning for bringing this up is, a blind eye is being put on that. I mean, if those businesses which, who are basically we're competing against.
Right.
If they're can, if they can continue breaking the law openly, breaking the law.
Well, I, I think that the, I think that their law kind of parallels this one. It says on Saturdays and Sundays, two AM on Saturdays and Sundays.
I was just at the police jury for quite a while, and it stated, I was, it was stated that at Sun, starting on Sunday, twelve o'clock.
You'd have to take that up with the police jury. That's about violating parish laws, and we have nothing to do with parish laws.
Yeah, but the same, uh, legal individuals.
This body has no power over there. So if someone's working the law in the parish, that's between the police jury and the sheriff, Sheriff's Department, and not the city council and the Bastard Police Department. We understand your predicament. But I need a motion for someone, from someone, on what they would like to do, or, or, or institute, if there's such a motion. And if there's not, then...
I mean, even with the, okay, if the, if our security does not have the ability to arrest, but to at least allow us to hire our own security, and if the police officer is needed to call.
See, the problem with hiring your security, they're not vetted by us. That's, that's security, we don't know the quality of it. And if these gentlemen want to make, if any one of these five gentlemen...
Then how about putting a cap on the amount that's required?
Well, the, the invitation for a councilman to make such a motion is, is open right now. And if one of these gentlemen don't make the motion, then it's not possible to, to accommodate you, uh, your request. But if one...
Make a motion that we cap the amount that the guy can do, you know, for a security.
Wait, make that a little more specific, Mr. Prater.
Make a motion, cap the amount.
Before we, before you make that announcement, I don't think we can make, we, we can, we can't do the cap.
You're talking about the, the pay, the pay amount?
We, we can't put a cap on it.
Okay, that's, that's the policy of the chief. Chief, can you come up, can you give us shed a little light on this? We're gonna ask Chief, uh, Assistant Chief, well, he's the chief now because the chief is on vacation. So when the chief's on vacation, this is our chief.
What was the question, Mr. Mayor?
The question, Chief, is the amount, how is that thirty dollars an hour set? Cause that's the issue.
Well, it was, it's set by the chief, and it's twenty-five dollars for non-alcoholic security. If there's no alcohol at the place of business, it's thirty dollars if there's alcohol involved. And that's not a number he just pulled out of his hat. He, he polled the departments in our area, and theirs is approximately the same amount, or more.
Okay. And, and he doesn't want...
And then I heard, uh, someone saying about two hours, like just, why back it up to ten? Why don't you start it at twelve and go to two? Well, then you're not gonna get any officers that comes out, gonna put their uniform on, come up from home, and when they're asleep, work for two hours, and then go back home.
Yeah, I know that.
So you wouldn't get any post-certified police officers if you just wanted them to work two hours. That's why, one of the reasons why they wanted to back it up to tw, ten, to make it four hours. I understand what Mr. uh, Mayberry's predicament is. And it's up to the mayor and Board of Alderman if they want to amend this law, but I strongly suggest that you don't take away the security, period. If you want to change it to private security, like you said, you wouldn't be a, aware of how good these security officers are. Now, something's better than nothing, but it's between having a Spam sandwich and a steak dinner. You want to have a private security that no one respects, or you want a police officer? I've experienced that myself, working security in a uniform that's not like this one. It was a community action uniform, but it was a Bastard Police Department uniform, just not dressed blues. And I told the person, "You need to turn your music down, it's too loud." "Oh, I don't listen to rental cops, you can just go away." "Look at the badge, sir, it's Bastard PD." "Oh, yes, sir, I'll turn it down right now." And that's the issue you're gonna have with private security.
Okay.
Mayor, I just say, we're taking a heck of a lot of risks, this council is, and you, Mayor, if we go through with this. I mean, when we, when we passed this back in thirteen, we had some issues. And we thought we made a good decision on what we did. And I think it has, cause obviously it's worked pretty good, I believe, over the last four years. I just think we're taking an undue amount of risk if something happens.
Well, I, I have to open it up so that if the, the desire of this body, or any member of this body is to set forth something, so, so, uh, I'm duty-bound to open up the process so that if anyone... And Mr. Prater, Mr. Prater, your, your motion was to remove the cap, and that's policy rather than an ordinance, is that correct, Chief?
Yes.
So, and that's the police department's policy, set by the chief, where he set the rate. And he did that after going to, he called those departments that he checked with, including Monroe, West Monroe, and other departments, to see what they charged, and some of them were higher than that, but I don't think any was lower.
Twenty-five would be the lowest.
Twenty-five was the lowest, okay. And, uh, so, Mr. Prater, we don't set the policy uh, of the police department through these ordinances, is that correct, Mr. Mr. Counselor, sir?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So we don't set the policy. So Mr. Prater was trying to give some relief, monetary relief, but while keeping post-certified, is that correct, Mr. Prater?
Excuse me?
You were trying to keep the post-certified provision, but you wanted to give some slack on the money.
No, I want to kick out the post-certified.
Oh, okay. Okay. And allow the club to have private security?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion is by Mr. Prater, Councilman Prater, to, uh, alter in some form the requirements for a post-certified officer and allow the, the, um, the business owners to hire private security. And I don't know the, the, if the private security have certain grades, you know, whether it's grade A, Spam sandwich you made to come in, whether it's Spam or Bologna or, 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 uh...
Yes, I was trying to exaggerate the fact that it's a lesser degree of security.
Well, and I'm trying to exaggerate the fact that even though Spam sandwich, Bologna, and pressed ham, and, uh, chopped ham and all that, I imagine they come in all flavors, all, all varieties, private security. I imagine some is very bad, and some, you know, is better than others, and we don't know what that is. So I don't, without a standard, Mr. Prater, because I don't know whether they grade private security, or whether private security firm has certain certifications. I don't have any idea about that, and I'm, I'm weak in that point. And...
So Chief, Assistant Chief Evans, you saying they would have to be vetted, would they not?
We vet them, you know, you know, I second that.
But who's gonna do that?
To, to occupy, don't they have to have an occupation license to operate in Bastard, a private security?
They'd have to have some type of license to operate in Bastard, yes. So they'd have their license from where they're stationed, that probably Monroe area, and they'd have to have insurance, and then they'd have to, I guess, get a license here to operate here.
And who would prevent a couple of guys to, to, uh... Put on a uniform and say, "I'm security."
As long as they got an occupational license, I don't see how you would stop that.
Yeah. I mean, I see, I see so many problems with just saying eliminate posts without saying that there's some requirement of, of the private, uh... Oh, Mr. Pierre, go ahead. Mr. Pierre, please don't wait to, please don't wait to interject, sir.
Absolutely.
Interject when you need to.
Absolutely. I, I think I've, I've, I've tried to, I've tried to guide the council, uh, on what you say, and perhaps the ramifications on what you do. That being said, I'm thinking that you're gonna need a second from that motion, cause I think y'all discussing it.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, that's my fault, Mr. Pierre. Uh, do we have a second on Mr. Pierre? Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Prater and seconded by...
On which motion?
On the motion to remove the post-certification requirement. Okay, so it was moved by Mr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Green, Councilman Prater, Councilman Green, that the post-certification, post-certification requirement be changed to private security. Is that some kind of certified private security, Mr.?
Yeah, certified.
And I don't know what certified means, but, you know, certified to what degree, so that's...
Got occupational license, put on a uniform.
Okay.
They good enough?
If that's your motion, Mr.?
That's my motion.
That's his motion, okay. Moved by Mr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Green. Uh, discussion. Thank you for correcting this, Counselor. Discussion.
Thank you, Pierre.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
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 Roll call, please, Ms. Gorman.
Mr. Moore?
Nay.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Nay.
Mr. Green?
Nay.
Mr. Locke?
Nay.
Three to two.
Three to two?
No.
No. So the noes have it, the motion failed. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayberry, for coming, and thank you, Chief. Thank you, Counselor, for keeping us on track.
Yes, sir.
Um, I lost my agenda here. Okay. Okay, ten. Resolution seventeen dash seventeen forty-seven, a resolution of the mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the execution of a lease agreement for the grounds, building, and structure known formerly as the International Paper Learning Center, located at seven ninety-four Colliers Lane, Bastrop, Louisiana, uh, from TODA One LLC, for a term of one year, at a rental rate of one dollar per year. As we stated earlier, there is a fine group of gentlemen who formed a corporation who purchased all of the assets remaining in Bast, in the City of Bastrop from International Paper. And these gentlemen expressed a desire to, to help the City of Bastrop, help Morris Parish, by trying to put this, uh, industrial property back in service, uh, uh, as industrial property, a hundred and forty acres over there at the International Paper site, and also to make available this thirteen-acre tract. And then there was some, some housing that was from Spee, uh, Spire Street, Spear Street, to Fox, to North Odom, right? That International Paper bought as a buffer zone, that they never did anything industrial on it, but it was just there, and they removed all the houses. They want to put that back into residential, move the fence back over where it was, and, and we'd pick up two, two blocks of housing. Uh, they also purchased the training center, which is next door to Craftman Federal Credit Union. The building appraised, a legitimate appraisal for eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. It is probably the most well, well-built, uh, facility in Bastrop, Louisiana. International Paper didn't cut any corners on construction. And it's my opinion that the City of Bastrop would be blessed to have such a structure. Low maintenance, all metal roof, uh, it's, it's a...
Brick veneer?
Brick veneer, equipped with a full kitchen, with all the, you know, good air conditioning, good... They didn't cut any corners, so...
Restrooms, nice restrooms, just...
Yeah. It's really nice. And the City of Bastrop can benefit, uh, by that. They've got a meeting for area, um, that, uh, probably would have to get the fire chief and the state fire marshal to see what the capacity of that area is. But we could use that, we plan to use that for rental, for weddings, for, uh, club meetings, for every, you know, things that we rent the municipal center. The municipal center are quite large. Uh, five hundred seats, sometimes you might have something that's a hundred and twenty people, and don't need that larger facility. So it will generate additional revenue, more than I believe the cost of insurance and the cost of, you know, the things that we gotta do to, that's required in the lease. So, um, that being said, I recommend that we, that we, uh, adopt this. You see another, a separate sheet that's in addition to this. And Counselor, uh, can you talk about this, this sheet?
Yes, I can.
Yes, sir.
In the area of the law, they call this a counterletter.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, so let me just make sure that everybody on the same sheet of music. If you look at your, uh, your lease agreement, paragraph twenty-five talks about integration of parts. In that particular paragraph, it's, it tells you that this lease is going to supersede any previous agreements, discussions, negotiations, so on and so forth. As the mayor indicated to you before, uh, oftentimes businesses, decisions are made based on a business decision, uh, when there are tax consequences. More specifically, in this particular case, they're waiting on a year so they can get some tax benefits out of the property. Their intentions are, as manifested in this letter, to give it to the City of Bastrop. After one-year lease, the lease is not a recurring lease, it's not reconduction at all in the, in the lease, uh, agreement. It's only for one year. This counterletter tells you, "Hey, look, this is what our intention is. This is what the council has to consider today." Uh, you have a building that appraised for eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. You have, you can get it for the lease of a dollar, which is traditionally when they want to donate it to you. They can't donate it now, but they're gonna just put it, a legal document in your face saying you can lease it for a dollar, because we intend to give it to you later, when, once we get that, that tax benefit after we've held it for a year. Uh, a lot of other agencies do it, I think, uh, Fannie Mae and FEMA, uh, have some similar provisions when you're trying to acquire property. They make, make you, uh, uh, hold it for a little while, hold it for a year before you can transfer. Similar provisions involved here. Uh, the, the letter in the spirit of this contract of lease says, "Lease it for a year. You're responsible for the insurance, you're responsible for the, uh, the municipal taxes, uh, with your municipal government. You're responsible for the parish taxes, insure the building." They want to make certain the asset is there, gonna protect you as well. Uh, and, uh, after that year period of time, it doesn't say that you're gonna have to renew your lease because you have this document saying that what their intentions are. Now, that being said, in the December the fifth, oh, uh, quote-unquote counterletter, uh, the, uh, the agency, I'm sorry, the, the, the organization, which was signed by Mr. Tom Oswald, I'm assuming that the leader of the corporation, has indicated that that is the intention of TODA One LLC to donate this, uh, building, or this asset to the City of Bastrop. He does say it's subject to the approval, uh, of the board and the members. And he said, but he said he does not anticipate a problem. So he's, he's telling you, on the one hand, "Lease it for a dollar, hang on to it, make some money off it, do whatever you're gonna do with it, and at the end of that period of time, we gonna give it to you." Now, the act of donation is a separate document, he's just telling you what their intentions are here. So if the issue's right now, if you trust him, that he's gonna do what he says... So if the issue's right now, if you trust him, that he's gonna do what he says he's gonna do, uh, I think it's a great deal for you, at the end of the day. But this is traditionally done, it's called a counterletter, something that you say, hey, look, I can't say it here, because it's a lease agreement, but I'm telling you what I'm gonna do here.
Thank you, Counselor. Any, any questions for Counselor?
I was thinking, Mayor, would probably be good for us to go ahead and figure out how much, uh, insurance is gonna cost and things like that, just to answer questions that come along, but I, I'm, I'm totally agreeable with this myself.
Okay.
May I move for the, uh, adoption of Resolution seventeen, seventeen forty-seven?
It's been moved that we adopt Resolution, Resolution seventeen, seventeen forty-seven.
Seconded in motion, Mayor.
Been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Moore, Mayor pro temp, Councilman Moore, that we adopt the resolution, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you, Counselor.
And just FYI, gentlemen, uh, in the counterletter, uh, the organization contemplated that the donation period should be sometime around the latter part of September of two thousand and eighteen, so it's a little less than a year, but I'm assuming when all this discussion slash negotiations was taking place, it was taking place prior to your Councilman-
It was. It was. Yes. Thank you. We're at item number?
Eleven.
Eleven. Resolution seventeen, seventeen forty-nine, a resolution allowing the two members elected by the Fire and Police Department, as provided in paragraph B one C of this section of RS thirty-three, twenty-five, thirty-six, shall not be required to be a resident or qualified voter of the area in which they are appointed to serve, or resident of the parish in which the area is located, provided that such exceptions are approved by a resolution of the local governing authority. We have two, we have a city service, civil service board, of course, and all of the members by, are required by law, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Pierre to weigh in on this.
Sure.
But all of the members are required to, uh, be a resident of the area served. It's a City of Bastrop Civil Service Board, and there is, there's special provisions that I'm gonna ask Mr. Pierre to, to, uh, address, uh, for Fire and Police, because the Fire and Police Department has, they, uh, have provisions that the chief can't run or vote and be, accepting a tie. So Chief Campbell, or Police Chief, or Chief Crowder, Fire Chief cannot vote, run, or tie, or serve unless there's a tie, but the rank-and-file members choose from their peers that are qualified to serve. And right now, I understand that the ordinance requires that they live inside the City of Bastrop. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yeah, what the, yeah, what the, you mean the state statute?
No, the, the statute that we have here in Bastrop right now requires, is that right, Ms. Goldman?
Yes.
Requires them to be from Bastrop, in, within the city limits. So what I did, I asked Ms. Goldman to pull from her records, our city clerk, the number of police and fire, the total number of police and fire, and the total number that lived inside the city limits of Bastrop. Ms. Goldman, do you have those numbers?
Yeah, I forgot to run them again.
No problem.
But it was like, one department was seven, maybe out of thirty-something, and the other-
So seven living inside the City of Bastrop.
Out of thirty-eight.
And then about forty total.
Right.
So the pool of, 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 of people who qualified based upon the residency was very small.
Right.
It was about, uh, uh, eight percent.
Right.
Somewhere in there. So only, I'm sorry, it was about fourteen percent.
Now, I didn't look on those seven to see, 'cause I didn't have a way of looking, if that seven lived here five years.
Because the requirement is, in order to serve, you've got to have five years of residency within Bastrop, and then not all of those seven had five years. So theoretically, the pool could be limited out of a forty-person department to two or three or four people, and I felt that that was not good, because I wanted to give the, the, uh, the policemen and the firemen an opportunity to elect, to represent them on the Civil Service Board, the best person who they felt, felt would be strong enough, who would be knowledgeable enough, fair enough to serve. So I asked Mr. Pierre to research the law and, uh, research civil service law as well as statutes, and my desire was to, uh, limit it to Morehouse Parish or twenty-two miles, because I did not want, well, I won't say why. Mr. Pierre warns me about, be careful what you say. You won't have to eat those words later. So, so I don't want to eat those words, but I had a desire to limit it to twenty-two miles, based on the rationale that I didn't want to prevent a person who lived in Paraval, Louisiana, just across the Washita Parish line, not to be eligible, but to grant a person who lived above Jones, Louisiana, on the Arkansas line, close to Wilmart, which is thirty-plus miles away, the right to be done, who can get here faster, the person that lives in Paraval, across the Washita Parish line. So therefore, with all these considerations, I asked Mr. Pierre to create a law that I could get away with doing twenty-two miles or Washita Parish, and he told me he couldn't do such a thing. Mr. Pierre, you want to comment on what you came up with though?
Uh, uh, Mayor, I'm sorry. Um, the statute was pretty clear that, uh, save and accept a resolution from this body, you all were boxed in with your Fire and Police personnel, who were serving as members of the Civil Service Board, to either be residents here, uh, uh, serving this governing body, or with, at least within Morehouse Parish. Only way to get past it is for this body to pass a resolution saying otherwise, and that's what the statute says. It gives you the authority to create a resolution and say that they're not required to be within the parish.
And it was either all or nothing. The Civil Service Board sent us this resolution, is that correct?
Yeah.
The examiner, the state examiner, sent us this and said, there's no, you can't paint this another way, it's either all or none.
Let me, let me-
Go ahead.
Ms. Goldman, if we put the, uh, total number in Morehouse Parish, what would that, what would that be?
No, I didn't, I didn't pull those numbers.
Robert, I asked the Civil Service Board, they said all, the, 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 now, we, Mr. Pierre went, and I went back and forth, and he kept telling me, I'm not a lawyer, and, uh, in his, you know, in his smooth way, but it says the area which you served, what's the area that these people served?
Bastrop.
Bastrop.
Right.
Not Morehouse Parish.
Right.
So areas served, Bastrop. It's a Bastrop Civil Service Board, it's limited to Bastrop people, the other members. So they, it's my contention that areas served is Bastrop and not Morehouse Parish. So I had much discussion with the examiner on my own, the examiner's office, and I, they said generally it's all or none, and I said, you mean, the person can live in Los Angeles and commute back and forth and serve, and they said, yes. Can I limit it to this? They said, it's the area served, it's all or none, you can't have it both ways. So, you know, I tried, and, and, uh, so here's, here's the thing. Right now, it's Bastrop, and they didn't give me any go-ahead that we could say Morehouse Parish even. They said, it's this specific language, they sent it up here, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they sent it up here and said, don't deviate one bit, don't put anything in here that's not in here. It's either this one that's Bastrop, or this one that's nothing.
Well, I, I don't understand, why would we have people on a board that's not willing to live in Bastrop?
Well, I can tell you one reason, because housing is limited, and, uh, when you're making a, and when you're investing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a home, you want to get the best value. And I know I would not say, well, I got away getting a, getting a home that's, that's on Brunt, on, across Brundle Street, rather than on this side of the creek, you know, two houses, one on one side of the creek.
We have some houses that baking, that's in nice neighborhoods.
Yeah, but when you are signing on the dotted line to pay for a house over thirty years, uh, and you can buy one that someone is gonna sell you, that's worth two hundred and thirty thousand for a hundred and fifty versus one in Bastrop, then I, I don't think it's fair for us to make people select a house that's within the city limits of Bastrop.
Man, I, I don't have a problem with, with expanding it to Morehouse Parish.
That wasn't an option, Mr.-
Yeah, but I, I do have a problem by, uh, sending it outside the parish.
I did, uh, well, I did up to twenty-two miles.
Yeah, well.
Because twenty-two miles eliminates the City of Monroe and West Monroe.
Okay.
But we can't have it both ways, and we've got to fill positions that have already expired December tenth. So, you know, I exhausted every, I worked as fast as we could, and I exhausted every option, but they didn't give us a Morehouse Parish option.
Okay.
And so it's limited to the four people, only four people or so can run, for the representative to represent what's so vital to these thirty-eight, thirty-eight or forty other people, when you limit the pool to four people, uh, versus, uh, letting you live in, in, uh, well, first, we have a hiring, where we, they gotta live within forty miles as a chief? They already gotta live within forty miles. So it's not someone that lives in Calhoun, okay, or, 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 you know, somewhere Columbia, nothing wrong with Calhoun and Columbia, I'm just using that as an example, Monticello, Arkansas. They've got, that limits where they can live. So if we have one limitation on, you can only live this far, then why not let that be the limitation for serving on the Civil Service Board? Even though it was too far for me, Mr. Locke, also.
Yeah, I, I, I think that they've kind of tied our hands then. They've kind of tied our hands, so.
So why, why do we need to even make a, have, have a resolution then? It's already in concrete.
Well, it's already Bastrop, the, you, you can change it to, now, if you want the person to be limited to a person that lives inside the city limits of Bastrop.
Which, which it is now.
Which it is now. You're limiting, right now, as we speak, you're limiting it to five people, maybe, out of forty. Okay, now, here's the thing about that, as I see it, you're limiting to five people out of forty. What if you elect one, and, and, and they do, they go up on the Bonner Ferry Road and see the city limits sign and see the house as is, this is an actual case, right next door on the golf course at Morehouse Country Club? The house is on the golf course, at the city limits sign, and it's, it's a house that they're selling for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, right?
That's their choice.
You can't buy that, you can't move a one house and still serve on the Civil Service Board. And what we're gonna end up with, gentlemen, is we could, I don't, I asked Ms. Goldman, don't tell me the names of the people, because I would make statements that I don't want to be taken personally. You could end up with three people who, even though I know all of our people are qualified, who might not be the best candidate, and the grave issues that these Civil Service Board faces, they're, sometimes they, where the, a person's livelihood is on the line, or, or, or they have to be strong enough to stand up to the mayor if I did something wrong that violated civil service. They've got to stand up, and we're signing their checks, they've got to stand up to me or to Chief Campbell or to Chief, uh, Assistant Chief, or one of their captains. They've got to sit here and preside over hearings of their, of their superiors sometimes, and that's a tough order, and I wanted them to make the choice to get the person that they want, rather than us sitting up here. I think they got enough sense to elect the right person, and for us not to give them the opportunity is an affront to those officers who have sense enough to choose the person that they want. So, so even if, to represent them on the Civil Service Board. So the thing about Bastrop, inside their city limits, uh-
We have some competent people to, to sit on, to get on the board.
You saying we don't have-
No, I didn't say we didn't have. I said that I wanted to give them choice to elect. I asked Ms. Goldman not to give me any names, did I not, Ms. Goldman?
No, I did.
I said, don't give me names, 'cause I don't want this to be a personal thing, and it's not personal, it's not an affront to those seven who live in the city, and those five who've been on the force, or three or four who've been on the force for more than five years. It, I didn't want to know who they were, but I wanted to, I trust the forty, the thirty-eight police officers and dispatchers and, and patrolmen and detectives to, to select the best person out of the thirty-eight, okay? Well, no, not thirty-eight, 'cause a couple of them can't serve. Can you serve, Chief?
No.
You can't serve. The chief and assistant chief can't serve, the, the fire chief, and so I wanted those people, I trust them, that they know who they work with and will not give us an oddball, uh, and, and, and to discriminate against, now, sure, I want local officers hired, but I trust them that they'd make the right decision, and what we're doing is we're limiting the decision down to fourteen percent or twelve percent of the, of their peers, and I think it's enough, I think it's-
Well, now, what I, what I was asking for, what I was asking for is, we, we got right now, we're the City of Bastrop, can, can come out of City of Bastrop.
Only.
Beyond that, or is that, where does the twenty-two miles come into this?
I said Morehouse Parish or twenty-two miles. Uh, that was what I want. No, that's, that wasn't possible. That, that wasn't possible, we couldn't do that. Mr. Pierre said, you can't do that.
So what can we do, Counselor?
Keep the same ordinance that we have.
You can stay where you are.
Same or change.
Or you can adopt the ordinance seventeen forty-nine, which really restates the state statute.
And you can get-
This is the exact language in the state statute.
That means, well, you, you could get a, a person on the board from Toluca if you wanted to.
Well, no, they can't, because they exceed the forty miles.
You can remove, you can remove the requirements that they be residents of their area served and-
Which is Bastrop.
Oh, 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 within the parish of Morehouse. So you can go outside the parish, but only if you all adopt an ordinance saying so. Otherwise, the state law says it already.
Well-
But the state law said you can go outside your parish if you adopt an ordinance. So the, the state law gives the authority to the local governing authority-
And I specifically asked the examiner's office, can we say Morehouse Parish? They said, you can say either one of these two, inside, like it's written, the, the, the one adoption or the other. What, what's the two? Does the two say specifically parish?
Oh, the, the, what's here is specifically was set forth in Title thirty-three, twenty-three, fifty-six, B one. That's the exact same language that's in your, uh, ordinance proposal, it's the exact same language in the state statute.
And they told me not to interject a single word. Don't even talk to the attorney about interjecting a single word change. Either leave it like it is or adopt the ordinance. Now, that's what I was told.
I mean, I'm just hung up on this third sentence, where it says, uh, shall not be required to be residents or qualified voters in the area in which they are appointed to serve. I'm just saying that, uh, it's just a stick-
I didn't like it either, Robert, I didn't like it either. Uh, I didn't like it.
What we adopt, you're saying is the forty-mile rule, is that, is that-
The forty mile is a rule on hiring. See, we don't hire beyond forty miles. So if someone lived in Delhi-
That's police, right?
That's police and, do we, Fire, uh, Chief, do we have, do you have a limit on Fire? We have a forty-mile limit on police.
You know, uh, we, we have, we have not given them a mile limit, but we have people from, or, 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 they have a limit.
Yeah.
This is civil service.
And that's only related to, to police and Fire. This relates to both. We can't cherry-pick and say police is this and Fire is that. So I, I just have confidence that, that Chief, Chief Campbell and Chief, uh, Assistant Chief Evans, uh, there, I know their process of how they vet policemen, there's seven steps. I know, uh, the process that Chief Crowder goes through, and we have quality people, and I would just like to expand the pool- And we have quality people, and I would just like to expand the pool, the selection pool, to the people that they choose to, to hire. And not limit them, because the best person, we want the best person on the civil service board. And the best person might not be out of that seven or five or forty. That's all I'm saying, that's one eight. That's best person, the objective should be to put the best person that's gonna represent them best and represent the interests of the civil service board and mission of civil service board. That is to know civil service law, to study the law and to be familiar with civil service law and, and keep us out of trouble. So that's all I'm asking this board to do, because right now it's limited to Bastrop. And it's my appreciation that they said, here's your, a possibility, these are the twos you can adopt? It's either, oh, no.
Is this just for the police department and the fire department are also included in the, um, people at large?
No, sir, the people at large still must, there's no provision or exception for the people at large, they have to come from Bastrop. Okay? But the, the other members? Is that correct?
That is correct. This only is the representative that represents the fire and the police. Mr. Shaw, I was listening to your question. I think the fact that it talked about the, the voting, kinda, um, the way it is now, you have to be a registered voter in Morehouse Parish. You have to live inside the city limits.
Okay.
To be considered. You have to have been lived here at least five years. So I'm guessing, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm guessing they're trying to loosen up and lay open where there's no hangups. If they don't mention the fact that they don't have to be a registered voters, then that part will be hanging because the previous that we're on right now says you have to be a registered voters. But if you're gonna allow them to live anywhere, they can be registered voters anyway, or they couldn't even, they might not even have to be registered voters, period.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that I, I believe that we ought to have people that are close to us. Now, what is close? I mean, we can argue that, but I'm just saying, right now it's either or, it's Bastrop or something.
Right.
And I hadn't, I hadn't heard what the something is. What's the alternative?
It's all or none. It's a zero sum.
Or I can go to, I can go to New York City and get.
Well, you wouldn't get hired because the hiring limitation takes care of.
These are firemen, that, that's what it is. It's not for the ones at large.
Oh, okay.
Those who are on the police force are on the fire.
But those other members have to be in Bastrop. The ones that are large, yeah, they have to.
Yeah. Mr. Willie McKee is on it, he lives inside the city limits. The other one was, uh.
Baltimore?
Well, he's not yet.
Yeah, okay.
Who was the other one? Mr. who? Oh, George, Mr. George Scott, he lives inside the city limits. And there's one more. No, the other one's not. So that would not, this rule would not affect them. You would still have to, if they was to resign or you replace them, you would still have to live inside the city limits to be on that board.
Okay. We've got a sidebar over here. Yes, sir, that's fine. Yes, that's good, I have no problem with that, gentlemen. But I just have supreme confidence in the, the hiring process, that the chief of police and assistant chief and the training and the vetting that they do, and also the fire chief, the vetting that they do, that they're gonna give us a good pool to start with. But I just think that it would limit, the possibility exists that it would limit us to, to the selection of a few, and this is not to slight anyone, because I strictly said, Ms. Goldman, I don't wanna know anyone's name, just give me numbers. But theoretically, it could limit the, the quality of, we could not get the best person. I mean, if you're gonna take one out of eight and only say you can vote for only one out of eight, you know, if this was fantasy football and you could only get one out of eight players on your team, you probably won't win. So I'm asking you to approve the ordinance as the examiner has sent up, that we will remove this provision, we're already limited to forty mile radius of hiring, which is still not what I wanted. I didn't wanna go that far unless you were in Morehouse Parish, but I didn't want to go to cities, to bigger cities and encourage people to live in the bigger cities. I wanted to kinda give an incentive that you can live across the parish line. See, the parish line, Bastrop's in the west part of the parish, the parish line to the west of us is seven miles, and the parish line to the northeast of us is forty, forty-some miles. So, um, so I, I just wanted to, uh, my desire was to limit and discourage people from living in the too big population, which is our big competition for attracting policemen. I didn't wanna have people living and encourage people to live in those places that were in competition for us retaining people. So, because if, if we have a shining star, I know Jamie Mayo, and if we have a shining star that's on our civil service board and all active, and he's living in Monroe, I'll say this about Monroe, 'cause Jamie's my friend, uh, then the Monroe Police Department might be interested in them. And I'm not, you know, you gotta think about all these things when you think about retention of employees. So I wanted the twenty-two limits be, because, and I'll say it, Mr. Counselor, you say, don't say these things, but I'll say it, I wanted to discourage the people from living in Monroe and West Monroe, because they are competing for our officers and they pay more. So I was trying to do the twenty-two miles to limit that, but include people who live seven and a half miles to the west of our city limits, uh, just across the line, at the Perrville, Collinston Perrville Highway. So, but I couldn't do that. So I had to settle for what the state examiner and Mr. Pierre came up with, uh, which is not what I wanted, Robert, I'm like you, I wanted a better solution, and, and I agonized over this, but to limit it to the people who are post-certified, I mean, who are five years resident, um, not a top officer, yes, sir?
You, you keep saying, we probably need to say the employee of the post of the.
Police and fire. Yes, sir, thank you for that clarification, mister. We're talking strictly.
Now, you, we're thinking about the people at large, I am.
No, no, sir. It's not the people at large, Mr. Locke, and I'm glad you made that clarification. It's only the two, the exception, the, the residency and voting requirement exception only applies to police and fire, and then they've got to go through an election. And the election has a strict rules, they have to, uh, it can't be conducted by the chief, they have to determine, they have to select members on who's gonna count the votes. So there are many safeguards to guard against, uh, uh, you know, to guard against.
Stacking it.
Yes, sir, stacking it and all of that. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, councilman.
Do we have to vote on this tonight? Can we get some more clarification on it?
Well, I think you can ask Mr. Pierre if there's any other clarification. Here's the problem, we have two expired seats, December tenth, uh, the police and fire representative seat expired, and we need to let them get down to their business of appointing because the seats have expired. And they can't have, I mean, they're hard pressed to. Yeah, they serve until somebody, but they're serving out of term. They're not, you know, yanked out. We do have a civil service board, but I wanted to give them the opportunity to go on and have an election, and it's gonna take time for them to have the election, but they can't do it until they know who can run. And I'm just fearful that we're gonna limit the pool, and we may not get the best, there's a four-fifth chance that we won't get the best, that we won't get the best candidate. There's more than an eighty percent chance, if you limit eighty percent of the pool, you got an eighty percent chance of not getting the best candidates. So I'm just asking you to, uh, adopt a resolution, because it gives the policeman and the fireman choice. And there's nothing wrong with choice. And, and then the next, and the next, um.
Let me, let me, let me try to help give some clarification, 'cause Ms. Lenora said, say something.
I know she wants us to move on.
Right.
Thank you, counselor.
Listen, let me, let me just assure you, if any of you are endeavoring, I know I'm gonna pull one of the mayor's tricks, go to your phone, pull up Title thirty-three, the specific statute, this ordinance is quote-unquote what the state statute says. And the only thing the state statute says is that, listen, gentlemen, you can do it according to one paragraph, which is, you lock them in, they have to be five years in your, in your city, they have to be a voting member of your city, and of course, obviously they mean they're gonna live in your parish if they live, if they vote in your city. The other option is, as the all or none that the mayor was referring to, if you wanna go outside your city, you can't put a mile restriction. I think the mayor was concerned about where Bastrop was located, and it wasn't in the center of the parish, but it was on the, on the edge of the parish, you know, to try to get twenty-two miles to stretch to one end of the parish, but not go so far as to grab the metropolitan area is what you were concerned about.
Yes, sir.
That being said, the statute is not designed to cherry pick. The statute say either you're gonna say they're in, or you're gonna say they don't have to be in. And that's what the state statute says, but it gives you all the authority to say it. If, if you don't say it, then they have to be a resident of, of Morehouse Parish and a voting member of the city and been there for five years, just what your current regulation says. So I think what the mayor's asking is that, can we just do what the state statute says and expand it and open it up? And I think that's what he's trying to ask you all to do. But the call is, is right back in you all's court.
Yeah.
Because the statute specifically says, if you all don't pass an ordinance saying otherwise, then you where you are.
And, and let's give these policemen a choice, and firemen a choice, a choice of their preference. 'Cause we're eliminating eighty percent of their choice by putting these arbitrary restrictions on, on who can run. Do we have a motion?
Question is, is this resolution as written right here, is that the only choice we got?
Your choice, your choice, you have two choices.
It's all or none, mister.
Yeah. Look, look, let me, let me see if I can do it for you a little better, okay? In the statute, Title thirty-three, Section two fifty, two, twenty-five thirty-six, has Paragraph A and Paragraph B and Paragraph C. Okay? I'll tell you specifically, I'll read so you can, you can be absolutely clear on what you're talking about. Paragraph A, and it's talking about fire and police civil service boards. Paragraph A says, A, a fire and police civil service board is hereby created in the municipal, uh, in the municipal parish or fire protection district, which shall be composed of five members who shall serve without compensation. This board shall have a chairman, a vice chairman and a secretary. The domicile of the board shall be within the area it serves. Paragraph A. Paragraph B, one A, Paragraph B, open parentheses, close parentheses, one, open parentheses, small alphabet A. To be eligible for appointment or to serve as a member of a board, a person shall be a citizen of the United States of America, a resident of the area for which fire or police protection is provided for at least five years, next preceding his appointment, and at the time of his appointment, a qualified voter of the area. That's Paragraph B. Paragraph B, little, uh, sub-paragraph B. However, with respect to the two members elected by the, by and from the fire and police department, that's where you are in your ordinance. However, with respect to the two members elected by and from the fire and police departments as provided by Paragraph C-three of this section, such a member shall have been a resident of the parish in which the area, uh, that they serve is located for a period of at least five years preceding their appointment, provided such residence requirement is approved by resolution of the local governing authority. Then you go to Paragraph C, which is where you are here. It says, notwithstanding the provisions of Paragraph A and B that we just got through talking about, gotta be a resident, uh, and gotta be in the parish, so on and so forth. Paragraph C says, notwithstanding the provisions of sub-paragraphs A and B of this paragraph, the two members elected by and from the police, fire and police departments as provided in Paragraph C-three of this section, shall not be required to be residents or qualified voters of the area in which they are appointed to serve, or residents of the parish in which the area is located, provided, and that's where it comes back to you, that such exceptions are approved by resolution of the local governing authority. So I'm telling you right now, that it's, 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 the law, this is what the state law says, it puts the requirement, the state law put the requirements for the five years and the residence requirement and the member of the voting, uh, of the voting area, Bastrop, Morehouse, in five years. That's state statute itself. So your ordinance that you have in place right now is also tracking the state statute. But what the ordinance also says is that, notwithstanding the previous provisions which, which sets forth the parameters for all the members as well as the fire and police, when you're talking about the, the fire and police personnel that's gonna be appointed to the civil service board, with respect to those two positions only, it gives you all the authority to remove the requirement that they have to be, uh, living in Bastrop and/or Morehouse Parish. It's just to you, if you don't, if you don't create an ordinance that says so, the state statute governs, they have to be here. That's, that's where you are.
Counselor, are you saying that that provision, that exception does not apply to the other members, the large?
This is only talking about fire and police.
Okay. Do we have an, uh, in a, a motion?
I'm trying to figure out how to say it.
Okay.
You're saying that we cannot say parish, right?
No, what, what I'm saying is, under the quote-unquote all or none theory that we're on right now, either you're gonna stay where you are, you can't just put a mile restriction as the mayor, you know, wanted to do with respect to the twenty-two miles, you're either gonna say they have to be in the parish, or you can say they don't have to be in the
Well, the state examiner told me I couldn't even say that.
Well, I mean, what I said, I'm just saying.
It was served, and it said, what's, what's served mean, well, what department is, it's a Bastrop Police Department, and that's who serve. So, I mean, you can get an attorney general's opinion or whatever, but served, to me, meant served, uh, uh, naturally, if you're a voter, the parish voting registration rolls, but, as I see it, uh, we didn't have, we don't serve the parish. We serve Bastrop and Fire District Number Two.
Right, right.
So, uh, but they told me, don't change anything, don't change anything. I said, can I do this? Don't change anything. This is your choice, it's on this paper. Don't change, don't add any, don't take away, don't add.
As this paragraph's printed, I mean.
Yes, sir, as Mr. Pierre.
Not one word.
Listen right here.
That's what they.
I make a motion, we stay where we are.
I second it.
We're gonna be here all night.
That we stay and limit it, limit them to two or three sources?
Within the city, we got to qualify people in the city. It's my opinion.
So you're saying within that's, oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that, uh, that we, that the ordinance, as we have it, limit the fire and police pool of applicants to serve, to run for election. Any discussion?
Mayor, can you clarify your saying ordinance? It is a resolution.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What's on, there is no need to vote, it dies for a lack of motion.
What, what is that now?
I mean, it's, the table is, is the resolution.
Let me read it, let me read the resolution then, okay? I'm sorry, I got so engrossed in the, in the, uh, discussion.
I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on the agenda.
So the resolution, yeah, the resolution, it's either you, you.
Adopted or not.
Motion for this, or you, we don't have a motion, is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so let's go back to the resolution. So.
We don't have to vote.
The resolution says, a resolution allowing the two members elected by the fire and police. police department as provided in Paragraph B one C of this section of RS thirty-two, twenty-five thirty-six, shall not be required to be residents or qualified voters of the area in which they are appointed to serve, or residents of the parish in which the area is located, provided that such exceptions are approved by resolution by you guys." So that's the, that's what's here to be moved on, or no motion. Now, I mean, I can't say how serious this is, because the civil, I don't know how many of you have ever been to a civil service hearing. These are hearings where people's jobs, I know you wanna get out of here, okay? All right. Uh, I know people wanna get out of here, but this is such grave, such a grave issue People's jobs are at stake sometimes. The persons serving need to be knowledgeable about civil service law, and they have to be strong enough to make decisions. And to eliminate eighty percent of the pool
If you don't have a motion, it dies.
Well, so if we can't get a motion, then the motion, then, then, then it dies for lack of a motion.
Right.
Uh, so it stays like it is, and, uh, I'm very disappointed. Resolution seventeen dash seventeen fifty, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to approve the exemption of permit fees for sewer tap, uh, for the Briarwood Estates of the Bastrop Housing Development, which will have one commercial building and thirty-eight residential homes. Briarwood Estate of Bastrop Housing Development will be responsible to pay the plan, reviews, uh, and inspection of the property. Mr. Steve Perry and Sandra.
Uh, Mayor, he already had another meeting that he was hoping he'd get back.
Are you gonna present that, Ms. Goldman?
But I will.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Perry, this is his second housing project that he is trying to develop. Um, he come to us last year and asked for some help to get his packet ready. It's very competitive process, but it's gonna be on Dave Street, which is right off of one thirty-nine. Uh, in the past, he's come for us to give him property tax credits for, I think, up to like seven years. He's not asking the city to do that. He's reapplying, the money, um, it's really tight, uh, you, you get it based upon points. And so what he did was, he come to the mayor, told him what he planned to do, and he said if we could just waive just the permit fees and the taps, that he would not ask for, uh, property tax, uh, credits. So, but we told him that we have a third party that actually does our inspections, and they would have to be paid by somebody. He needs an inspection, so he's willing and understands what that would be. So he wants to do this, so that way he can take it to the, um, housing authority and try to get funding, um, for this project. His last one is over off of Daisy. It's been very successful, it's very, very nice, and he has several in, several other cities also. But, uh, he would like for y'all to consider granting him this, so he can find out whether he's gonna get funding or not.
And he's a local developer also.
Yeah, business person too.
Yes. And I would recommend passage of this, um, and I hope that you, we have thirty-eight residential and one commercial on the tax rolls immediately after development.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem, Councilman Marvin Moore, second simultaneously by Mr. Shaw, Councilman Shaw and Councilman Locke, uh, that we approve this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The resolution is adopted. What are we on, thirteen? It's thirteen. Appoint member to the Bastrop Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board. Okay. Now, these are not, when we appoint, we're appointing people, not police and fire. We don't appoint them, so, uh, and we have a process. Ms. Goldman, would you, wait, let's see who's, Ms. Goldman, would you talk about those appointments, please?
I, I will. We have, um, the, the board is, is, it, it's ended up with several varieties of people. It tries to get diversity. It's designed to be a mediator between the city and the employee. Sometimes we're all on one accord, but it's supposed to be designed to take the politics out of it. So you have collegics, and this is what we're trying to, uh, to rename someone. Mr. Walter Moore was on the board. He, he served a term of someone else, I can't remember which one it is, but anyway, he decided that he wanted to run for councilman. Well, when he qualified to run, he was back in the political, so he had to resign. Um, he did resign. Long story short, we're replacing. He, the process is, if you wanna become a member, if you live inside the city limits, and if you do not serve or in a political pers, uh, position, then you are eligible to write U L M president and submit your resume and tell them that you are applying for this job. Dr. Bruno collects four names, sends the resume and a letter to the mayor, giving them, um, the names with the resume, so he can look over them. And the mayor has the right to name something for y'all to consider devote, to appoint them. Um, Mr. Moore was one of the ones that applied to come back to the board, and, uh, it was, um,
You wanna name the others? There was Clem.
What, what do you wanna do?
Well, I'd rather leave the names out, but they were all qualit-
They were all very qualified.
They were all well-qualified, every single one. But I tended to, Mr. Moore had some experience, and, uh, he wanted to serve the city, and he wanted, he ran for office, and he, um, was willing to serve, to continue. So it, I looked at it as more of a continuation, because he had not served a full term, and I thought that that was, uh, you know? So that's what I'm recommending, that the board, uh, accept Mr. Moore as, uh, to come back and serve on the civil service board.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
I second it.
Okay, it was moved by Councilman Green, and second simultaneously by Councilman Shaw and Councilman Prater, that the, that the appointment, uh, be approved. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Moore's the appointment. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Liquor license, Mr. Evans.
Well, he, I've been acting once before. The board's, I don't know. He declines.
There were twelve renewals for this year. Uh, I believe y'all have them, y'all's packet. Uh, one is Circle Cave, two is Discount Tobacco, three Fiesta Linda, four Fuel Track, five Handy Stop, six Harrods on North Washington, seven Juanita's Mexican Restaurant, eight M and S Easy Mart, nine's Primetime, ten is Quick Pack, eleven is Roma Italian Bistro, and twelve is Walmart. Uh, we recommend that you renew these liquor licenses as printed on your form.
So it's a recommendation of the Bastrop Police Department, as voiced by Assistant Chief, uh, Evans, that we renew these, uh, do we have a motion?
I make that motion, Mayor.
Motion's made by Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore.
I second.
Second by Councilman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Is that the last thing?
Yes, it is.
Is that it?
Woo! I guess it is.
May I make a motion for adjournment?
I second it.
Are you sure? Uh, it's been moved that we adjourned by Councilman, uh, Locke, is that correct, Councilman?
It is.
And second by, simultaneously by Councilman Green and Shaw, that we adjourn. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hallelujah.
The amazing adjourn.